Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the March 8th, 2021 Pennington County Planning Commission meeting. Recommendations from the Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda will be considered by the Board of Commissioners at the regular meeting on March 16th, 2021, at 10:30 a.m. The Planning Commission utilizes speaker request forms which are available in the Commission chambers during the meeting. Did I start without Jerry? Or is she here?
I'll just start until she gets here.
Okay. Do we want to hold up for two or three minutes?
No, I think it will be all right.
Okay. Let me know when you're ready. First item on the agenda is roll call. Note that everyone is here, less Jim. First item on the agenda is approval of the February 22nd, 2021 minutes. Are there any changes, corrections, edits to the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I have one. Page seven. And it's item number four. When we spoke of this, this, what's written there is fine, but we need to add something about, the survey has to include a corner pin for the property owner to measure off of, for building location. And the reason I bring that up is because actually, and I don't think Jerry realized it when she wrote this, they could do a survey if they found somebody else's property corners and measure off of those and still do the survey. It wouldn't include locating a pin for them. But we only ask that one pin be located in that survey, corner pin.
So on item number four, though, it does require a surveyed site plan showing the location of the new garage and that it is meeting the setback. So I think that they'd have to find the corners to do the surveyed site plan.
Yeah. I just wondered because I didn't know, I've seen properties surveyed that didn't have a pin mounted, that they didn't, they didn't find it. And the reason used to be rich is they charged about another $300 to locate a pin or install a pin.
Okay. So you're just saying that we, that they need to, the intent is, is that they, that they were to, for sure, understand the line that delineated the DOT right-of-way, correct?
Right.
And that the setback from that right-of-way was done accordingly with appropriate survey markers.
Right. They would need at least one corner pin to measure off of.
Okay.
The property owner, not the survey. The property owner, that way, when he, because he was going to build his own building, they actually then, of course, have that, and then he has to measure as far as the setback we agreed to and whatnot from there. We used to call them batter boards. You mount your boards over there then.
Brittany, do you have a, could you come up here real quick? I guess my question is, is how to retrofit this existing item number four that, that can incorporate the requirements for the DOT right-of-way and the pins accordingly?
On the...
Item number four on page seven of the notes.
For the vacation of, oh, I'm sorry, for the minor...
It was for a garage.
Oh, yes, the brink. I thought that we had added a condition, and I also thought that the gentleman had indicated that he had had a survey done and that he knew where the location of his pins were.
Is that, did that show up in the notes?
Let's see. I believe that was item number four, that the applicant submitted a surveyed site plan showing the location of the new garage maintenance milling, and that it is meeting the setbacks to the property line and the site plan submitted is from a certified surveyor.
And is that typically sufficient? Our concern is, is the location of the DOT right-of-way would not get adequately marked or identified?
Right. Well, the, we only look at where the property line is, and the property line, I believe, is on the, you know, the side of the right-of-way. So if it was, the site plan was submitted by a certified surveyor, they should be able to show what that setback is to ensure that it was outside of the right-of-way.
So they'll have to do the necessary work to find the pins that delineate the property points accordingly?
Correct, to submit that by the certified surveyor. Because that's not a typical requirement for a site plan for our office. But in this case, in order for him to submit that for his building permit, he's going to have to have a certified surveyor actually prepare the site plan.
Okay. Does that, does that do it, Charlie, or no?
Again, I agree with what you're saying, and there's absolutely no problem with that with me. What my problem is, is if they don't have a visible pin on the site, one of four, or five, depending if there's an angle in it, or whatever number, they don't have anything to measure from. And the survey fellow doesn't have to mount a pin to do their survey. They can pull off of somebody else's pin. And you'll see notes to that. I'm sure you've seen lots of notes, measured from such and such. And that way, they didn't locate a corner pin. And they get paid for mounting the corner pins in because they're, they're stamps and everything else that are on them. So all I'm seeing is that then, that person, we know that this particular gentleman's going to build that garage himself. And if he doesn't have a pin at that time to measure from, he can't go back up on somebody else's property and, and bring it down and everything. I think we need to include something right after showing at least one corner pin, the location of the new garage. Because he, the person building it needs something to measure off that's near the garage. That could be up by the road, it could be up by the corner, another corner of his property, but he still needs something to measure off of. And that's been the problem historically with homeowners that do their own work for a location. And that way, if it's not in the right place, we can hold him responsible. He can't come back and say, geez, you know, it didn't work out.
Excuse me. Is this something that was discussed at the meeting?
Yeah, absolutely. I, I very clearly stated...
No, that's fine. It was just a quick question.
That he needs a corner pin to measure off of. And they do charge extra to mount corner pins, some of the survey people.
So I have a suggestion.
Sure.
After the word "plan" in the first sentence...
Sure.
We just say, including applicable property markers. That way, the applicable property markers to delineate that line would need to be shown.
Sure.
Does that, that work for you?
Fine. All I'm worried about is that he's got one to measure off.
Okay. Any concerns from the board on that? So noting that change in item number four on page seven, are there any other changes or edits to the notes? Seeing none, hearing none, I entertain a motion for approval, noting the change.
I move approval of the minutes of the...
Second.
With the noted change.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion. Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Brings us to approval of today's agenda. Today's agenda consists of, on the consent agenda, is items three through six, followed by normal items seven through 14, followed by the county board report and the typical items from the public staff membership and adjournment. Are there any edits or changes to today's agenda? Hearing none, seeing none, I would entertain a motion for approval of today's agenda.
I'll move approval, second.
Motion and second for approval, further discussion. Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Get to the consent agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Molliter, Planning Director. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this planning commission on certain items from this agenda are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners who will make the final decision. Item number three is conditional use permit review CU 1407 for Josh Bruning to review an illuminated on-premise sign within 1,500 feet of a residential zoning district dwelling unit and a highway service district. And staff is recommending to end this conditional use permit with the applicant's concurrence. Item number four is conditional use permit review CU 1838 for Daniel Johnson, Highmark Properties LLC, to review a specialty resort in the general agriculture district. Staff is recommending approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU 1838 with conditions. Item number five is Minor Platt, MPL 2108, for David Spear, Fisk Land Surveying is the agent, to subdivide and create slot one and two of Grindstone Subdivision. And staff is recommending approval of Minor Platt, MPL 2108 with conditions. And finally, Minor Platt, item number six is Minor Platt, MPL 21F09 for Corey Brown, Fisk Land Surveying is the agent, to create tracks 17R and 78R of Russmore Ranch Estate Subdivision. And staff is recommending approval of Minor Platt, MPL 2109 with conditions.
Thank you. Are there any items that the staff wishes to pull from the consent agenda?
Not at this time. Oh, sorry, number five.
From the membership, are there any items that you wish to pull from the agenda?
Number six.
Anything else? For those folks sitting in the audience, the consent agenda consists of items three, four, five, and six. Normally, those are all voted on with one vote, being on the consent agenda. Number five and number six have been pulled from the consent agenda, so those will be heard for separate, will be heard, excuse me, for separate consideration. Is there anybody that wishes to pull items three and four from the consent agenda? Seeing none. I would entertain a motion for approval of consent agenda items three and four.
Mr. Chairman, so moved that we approve consent calendar, including items, it'd be what, I didn't look at the numbers, three and four?
Three and four. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion. Hearing none, seeing none. Does anybody in the audience wish to speak on three and four before the board votes? Noting none, all of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Brings us to item five.
Morning, Commissioners. Jason Thunison, Assistant Planning Director. Pulled agenda item number five just because it looks like there's an extra condition in there that doesn't need to be, and that's number one, so I just requested that be removed.
I'm sorry, what?
Condition number one, I just request that be removed.
So the Platt heading has already been corrected?
Correct. That one actually, it's a condition that carried forward from another staff report, so I just need to remove it.
Okay. So then that leaves conditions two through six, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Was there something to add on this?
Mr. Chairman, I was going to pull five, too, but mine's more as to whether the Commission, the other Commission members are concerned. We have condition six that basically says we've got to follow the rules of the wastewater plans and ordinances. And my hang-up on that was, we recommend approval for these, Jason, but on this particular one, there's a rather extensive, we're talking about locating, and number six also, if we solve this, it solves my problem with number six as well, and I don't know who has number six. But we're asking that they locate, which is going to cost them some expense, and I wonder when we're just putting condition that says passes the section 20, 204J, that, that's enough. In other words, I think we almost should, if, when we know other conditions exist, we should include them so that they have some idea that they're running into. That's a significant problem, not having the sizes of locations. And the other one, I think, has got three of them in it, three buildings or something. We don't even know where the septics are.
So you're talking about agenda number five?
Yeah, condition six, whether that's extensive enough...
Right.
Is what I'm saying. When we already know that, the report on that, and I'm not trying to pick on you or, or Port D'Anil that's sitting out in the audience waiting to come up here, both of them are hers, but it says, "In order to recommend favorably for this project as proposed, proof and/or documentation is needed that indicates the size of the drain field currently connected to the septic system that serves the residence."
Correct. So they have a current operating permit for the existing single-family residence that's there now?
Mm-hmm.
So to us, that is proof that they have an existing legal system, if they got an approved operating permit. So on the other proposed lot, where there is a suspected onsite wastewater treatment system, they would have to bring that into compliance if they ever develop and put a single-family residence on that lot. And at that point, they would have to meet 204J. That's kind of what that statement is saying.
Hmm. Well, but it doesn't have its permit yet. It says the lot currently has a valid operating permit, but does not have a valid onsite wastewater treatments system permit.
Right. So that's pretty typical of these...
And it looked like the reason was the drain field. Now, just to correct me if I'm wrong, but with the drain field, now they have to run a wire so that they could locate it.
That's correct. So it's pretty typical of these older systems that not have an onsite wastewater construction permit...
Right.
Because they're so old. So we wouldn't have those unfiled, but that doesn't necessarily mean they won't, that they're not in compliance and that they won't get an operating permit, which is what the case is here. So at one point, our office did validate that system, gave it a clean bill of health when it was pumped and serviced, and then issued an operating permit.
All right.
Now, the other questionable system on the other lot, we don't know any information about it. So at that point, they would have to prove that it is a legal-complying system before we issue an operating permit.
I understand what you're saying. Something, I'm saying I would like to have the applicant have more information, in other words, so they know what they're running into, rather than just an ordinance perhaps they haven't even read yet.
Is all of the applicable information in 204J?
Yes. So when they apply for a building permit on that proposed lot, they're going to have to have their septic information verified and approved before we can issue a building permit.
So they won't get a building permit without, without this, this check going through anyway?
That's correct.
And I guess I, I wouldn't, I think us listening to 204J is enough. I wouldn't, I wouldn't include all of 204J in here.
Yeah, I would go along with what the other Commissions, but I'm just saying, it's a pretty significant thing when you've got to locate these things without wires, and Jason knows.
He might have to do some digging.
It's an expense.
Okay. So no changes then to five?
Nope.
Less...
I'd be, I'd be satisfied with what, what he has then, if the other Commissioners are...
Okay.
Number six is a little broader.
Okay. So staff recommends approval of agenda item five, Minor Platt, MPL 21-08, striking the first condition, leaving conditions two through six. Is there a motion?
I'd move we approve.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion. Hearing none, seeing none. I forgot to check with the audience. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item before we vote? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item six.
Agenda item number six is Minor Platt, MPL 21-09. The applicant is Corey Brown. Agent is Fisk Land Surveying. Other landowners affected is our George and Janice Gamble. This is in the Russmore Ranch subdivision. Mr. Johnson, did you have any other questions?
No, it's the same. I had a question on that condition, where we knew there was going to be more requirements that were expenses to the applicant.
Right.
So if, you know, I think we've answered that.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, and in this case, they did get a subdivision regulations variance to waive profile and population tests.
Item one, though, is applicable in these conditions.
Yes, sir.
So we have MPL 21-09 with six conditions, and staff is recommending approval. Is there a motion?
Move to approve. I'll second.
Motion and second for approval, further discussion. Seeing none, to confirm, no, anybody in the audience wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Brings us to item seven.
Agenda item number seven is Layout Plan 21-07 to create Lot B of Guy Davis Homestead. The applicant and landowner is David Stone. Surveyor is Bros Engineering. The other affected landowner is Davis Homestead Reserve LLC. Site location is 19850 Willsey Road. Proposed lot size is 21.21 acres, currently zoned general agriculture district. There are two tax parcels we're talking about here. On the screen, you can see 2772 is on the left. That contains a single-family residence built in 1955, and two unidentified structures that are not listed on the Department of Equalization's records, nor is there a building permit unfiled in the planning office. And there are no onsite wastewater treatment systems that can be identified for any of those structures. In addition, tax ID 17874 on the right-hand side of your screen also contains an unidentified structure not listed on Department of Equalization's records or building permit in the planning office, nor can we identify an existing onsite wastewater treatment system. This is kind of a blow-up of those two portions of property. This is tax ID 2772. And this is the other one on 17874. And backing up to the proposed lot, access is unable to be determined via the layout plan. Basically, this is going to create an isolated tract according to what they're proposing. The subject property is, are located in an area of undetermined flood hazard. Request was sent out for interdepartmental review, and we did receive a few comments. The first one, from Department of Equalization, stating that it would be very useful if the surveyor could provide information on how many acres are coming out of each parent parcel so the balances can be calculated. And this is included as a condition of approval. The second comment came from County Highway Department, stating that legal access to the parcel needs to be verified to prevent this from creating an isolated parcel. Access by easement or right-of-way should be shown on the plat, and this is also included as a condition of approval. And lastly, the county environmental planner stated that a property described in this proposal does not have a current onsite wastewater treatment system or operating permit. And again, this is included as a condition of approval. With that, staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request, as it appears to be in harmony with existing lots and current land uses in the area, and recommends approval of Layout Plan 21-07 with conditions.
Thank you. Are there any questions, first off, on this item? Seeing none. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Sir, please come forward, and when you get to the lectern, state your name for the record.
David Stone. And in the discussion here, you mentioned a building permit for 1955 on there for some structure that's on, there's no structure on this land that's been built before 1910. There's an old abandoned log cabin, which is my grandfather's, and the reason we're keeping this land is to try and keep it from disintegrating anymore when we sell it to the new owner. And I think the building permit that was drawn there would have been for the 2,000, 200 or 20,002 lot, which is about 100 feet from the old homestead that we own. And what confused us was that the Willsey Road, our address, is 20,000, Fort Willsey Road. It ends in my cousin's lot, which is about 100 feet from our property line, and we assumed that that meant us, too, on the entrance, the getting to our property and things. But I just wanted to state, there was no building that was built before 2010 on that lot. I mean, 1910. I think he home, I think he built that, came out of his hut in about 1906 is when he built that log cabin. The first, and then he added pieces to it for his children.
So there's a single-family residence built in 1955, and then there's two identified struc, unidentified structures, and you're just saying that those were built before 1910?
The one that on the property that we own was built before 1910. About 100 feet away, my uncle would have built another building in 1955 that he lived in. Then I had two uncles, one lived in the newer building and one lived in the log cabin. But no one has been in that log cabin since 1979, I believe. And so it's in not livable condition for it. You can see holes through the logs and things like that.
Okay. Sir, have you read the items, the following condition items that were put on there for the, for the layout plat?
Yes.
Okay. Any concerns with any of those items?
The only one would be the testing the soil for wastewater treatment. And there's never, there's never been any out there, and there isn't going to be any in the future, but I don't, that I think the people knowledgeable me will decide on that more for it.
Yeah, so the intent of that is, is if you intend to do building out there, right? You, but you're saying that you have no intent to build anything out there?
No. No. If it wasn't for my niece, we would be selling it all.
Correct.
And she's never been out there for two years, but family is family.
Sure. Okay. Anything else? Any questions for Mr. Stone?
No, I just wanted to clear up that 55 building permit was all.
Yeah, well, I'd just like to clarify something. The home that was built in 1955 is not on your property, it's on your uncle's?
No. My aunt, when she owned this land, she divided it, and she put a property line between her son and her daughter, and he got that building and she got the log cabin for it.
Thank you.
Family can sometimes be hard to work with, is all I'll state on that problem there for it. All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak on this item? Hearing none and seeing none, staff recommends approval of Layout Plan LPL 21-07 with 12 conditions. Is there a motion?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion. Hearing none, seeing none up on the board, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Good morning, Commissioner Chutima Saboon, Planning Department. Agenda item number eight is conditional use permit 2106 to allow a garage prior to a principal structure in a suburban residential district. The applicants and landowners are Clyde and Diane Grauman. Mr. Grauman, Mr. Grauman is in the audience today. Site location is adjacent to 2555 Collin Street, which is the applicant's residence. So it's the property on the north side in the red. Current zoning district, suburban residential. The zoning ordinance lists seven factors that Planning Commission may consider in their review of conditional use permit application. Criteria number one, the proposed garage should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public. Criteria two, the proposed garage will be for residential use only per the applicant. It should not have any long-term negative effects on the use and enjoyment of the other property in, in the immediate vicinity. Staff cannot predict the effect of the property value in the neighborhood. Criteria three, allowing this conditional use permit should not affect, affect the normal orderly development or improvement of any surrounding property in the area. Criteria number four, the subject property is currently vacant. The proposed garage will, will not have any bathroom or living quarters. Access will be off of Collin Street, which the applicant will need to obtain an approved approach permit from County Highway. An address will need to be assigned and posted in accordance with Pennington County Ordinance 20 if this conditional use permit is approved. Criteria number five, access to the property will be off of Collin Street. The proposed garage will be for residential use... The proposed garage will be for residential use. Therefore, it should not affect traffic congestion. Number six, the current zoning district is suburban residential district. And accessory structure as a primary use is allowed in this district with a conditional use permit. Criteria seven, the future land use of the subject property is suburban residential district. This conditional use permit is consistent with the current complacency plan. Um, so the access is off of the Collin Street and there is no special flood hazard on the property. The request was routed for interdepartmental review. No significant concern or objections to the conditional use permit request received. So at the time of this, this staff report, there is no complaints or concern regarding the subject property or the requested use. Staff recommend approval of conditional use permit twenty-one oh-six with nine conditions.
Thank you. Quick question. In the criteria for approving conditional use permits, it says that it's, the proposed garage will not have any bathroom or living quarters. Yet when, on March second, when staff spoke with the applicant, he stated that the proposed garage will be for residential use only. So will it have living quarters or will it not have living quarters?
It will not have living quarter or the bathroom per applicant.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions for staff?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Same thing, I see the city refers to that in their comment sheet. They put also verify there's no water sewer to the garage. Do we have the capability to do that now? Do we follow up after they do their building permit? To make sure that there's no water sewer added to the garage? In other words, because the city's asking us to verify that. Their last comment says verify that there is no water sewage to the garage. Otherwise, the services need to be identified. So here we are, this is on the city one.
Yep.
So they're, in other words, we're responsible to the city to verify it, is what they're saying. Do we do that after they have a building permit?
Oh, no, we don't, we don't do that. We go by the applicant. But this conditional use permit will be reviewed in one year. So once they apply for a building permit, the staff will go to the subject property, to the proposed garage, that way that we can verify at that time that though.
That's good enough for me. I'm just saying so the city, because obviously the city includes us to hold us responsible for it rather than them. That's what I thought. Thank you.
Further questions for staff? Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit CU twenty-one dash zero-six with six conditions. Is there a motion?
Nine condition.
Nine, you're right. Seven, eight, nine on the next page. Thank you for the correction.
Mr. Chairman, I would, motion that we approve CU twenty-one oh-six with nine conditions.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion. Hearing none and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item nine.
Agenda item nine is conditional use permit amendment CU twenty-one oh-seven to allow, to amend an existing conditional use permit to reduce the setback between, between structures from ten feet to six feet on the property located at forty-one eighty-seven and forty-one ninety-nine Elk, Elkhorn Lane in a suburban residential district. The applicant is Bob Young. The site location is forty-sixty-three Elkhorn Lo, Elkhorn Lane, D and J Mobile Home Estate. It's located off of Country Road. The current zoning district is suburban residential district. The zoning, the zoning ordinance lists seven, seven factors that Planning Commission may consider in their review of conditional use permit application. The criteria number one, the requested use should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public. Criteria two, the existing use of the subject property is mobile home park, which was approved in nineteen-ninety-nine via conditional use permit CU ninety-nine dash thirty-seven. There is also another mobile home park nearby in the neighborhood. The requested use should not have any long-term negative effects on the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity. Staff cannot predict the effect of the property value in the neighborhood. Criteria three, allowing this conditional use permit should not affect the normal orderly development or improvement of any, any surrounding property in the area. Criteria four, the subject property is a mobile home park. Utilities deremaged, access roads are already in place. Criteria five, access of, access is off of Country Road. The interior road through the mobile home park is a gravelled surface approximately eighteen to twenty foot wide. Criteria number six, the current zoning is suburban residential district. A mobile home park is allowing this, in the district with a conditional use permit, which, which must meet the minimum requirement of Pennington Housing Zoning District, section two oh-nine, three oh-five and five-ten. Criteria number seven, the future land use of the subject property is suburban residential. This conditional use permit is consistent with the current complacency plan. The subject property is located within the, within spatial flood hazard area. All existing structure appear to be located outside of the flood, flood plain boundary. Interdepartmental review, interdepartmental review. We got, the first one is from County Ordinance Enforcement Officer. This subject, this subject property has several building permit violations and Mr. Young has been notified of this violation and is currently having these issues fixed. Um, county planning spatial flood hazard area. There is spatial flood hazard on the subject property. However, the carport being discussed are not within this area. That, that are no concerns or objections to the conditional use permit request received. So the existing conditional use permit for this mobile home park is conditional use permit CU thirty-seven, ninety-nine, I'm sorry, CU ninety-nine thirty-seven, which was approved in nineteen-ninety-nine to allow the mobile home park on the subject property and has been reviewed multiple times. This conditional use permit was scheduled to be, for a review on January eleven, twenty-twenty-one. So it's a couple months ago. But it was continued to a later meeting because there's several, there's multiple violation on the subject property, which bring to the, the violation CO VO twenty-one zero-zero-zero-two is the carport, the carports between the two carports. Carport number one is located on forty-one eighty-seven Elkhorn Lane and carport, carport number two is the one on forty-one ninety-nine. The condition number five of the existing conditional use permit state that a minimum ten-foot separation of, a minimum ten-foot separation between accessory structure and mobile homes on adjacent lots continue, continue to be maintained. So when staff performed a site visit in December, we found that it's appeared to be closer than ten, ten foot. Staff spoke with the applicant, the Mr. Young. Um, so Mr. Young applied for an amendment to the existing conditional use permit to reduce this, the setback between these two, two carports. If this conditional use permit is approved, the violation for the carports will be resolved. And it only be for the two carports, not for the whole, the, the whole mobile home park. The other violation will need to be addressed by the applicant in order to move forward with the existing conditional use permit. And the applicant, the applicant has been aware of these violations for some time. Staff recommend approval of CU twenty-one oh-seven with twenty-one conditions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff on this?
Well, my, my question clearly involves all of the violations that, I don't think anything should be approved until all of the violations have been addressed and taken care of.
Um, this, this conditional use permit only apply for the violation, which is, is to fix one of the violations. And the other three or four violations will be addressed for the existing conditional use permit. So the CU ninety-nine thirty-seven will be out for a review. And Mr. Young has been, come in to and talked to the staff and some of the building permit were applied, apply and, you know, submitted. So this one is only one violation. So if this one is not approved, it mean that this violation, the one that's specific for carport will not be resolved.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Kathy.
When do you anticipate the review of the, the conditional use permit to, to address and to, to see if the other violations have been resolved?
It was continued for, the, the existing one, it was continued for three months. So it should come up the end of this month or in April. Oh, no, I'm sorry, not, not, not March twenty-second, it will be sometime in April.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Didn't, excuse me.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, did Mr. Young not realize you need a building permit for one of these carports? Has he, has, are there carports that predated these two?
Mm-hmm. Um, so he is aware. He has been informed and the review has been reviewed since nineteen-ninety-nine. So the one before this January was in two thousand and eighteen and there were several violations, which including building permits violation. And then that's a couple more, they junk, junk cars on the property. So that's why this conditional use permit, I'm sorry, the, this mobile home park and then Mr. Young, the property owner, has been aware. And we gave him the conditions of approval for each review.
Quick question, is the carport tied down to a concrete foundation that's buried in the ground?
Um, no, I don't think so, but it's pretty big. That's what he requested. It can be moved, it can be removed.
It can be moved?
It can be moved, I'm sorry, it can be moved. And.
Without significant effort or what, do you know what it would take to move it?
It would, from what I spoke to the, the, um, the tenant's mother that's on the forty-one eighty-seven, um, she's, she indicated that it can be moved, but she, because the tenant will be moved in a couple years. Um, they are the student at one of the school in town. Um, and she stated that she can remove it when the, her, her daughter, her, her, her children's done for the school.
So it was done by the person living there, not necessarily the applicant for the, the mobile home park? Right.
Uh, but ultimately, the, the mobile home park owner is responsible for this. And we, we also gave the manager onsite, the, that's the manager onsite for mobile home park with the conditions of approval too. So.
So Mr. Young is in the process of applying for the permits and correcting things that, that are going to be required as part of the review of his conditional use permit? Is that correct?
Of.
He's in the process of applying for building permits to correct issues that was noted, that was, he was notified by staff?
Yes. Which the carport on the forty-one eighty-seven, the, the building permit application is already submitted. You have to fix that and the other two carport on the forty-one ninety-nine have the building permit.
Um, my next question is, um, it doesn't, I guess it doesn't really matter one way or another if it's six feet or ten feet apart, other than it appears that the rules continue to not be followed. So I, I guess I'm likely in agreeance with staff on this to approve this. But my last question is in regards to utilities. Are there any utilities that run in between those garages where these things should not be on the top of existing utilities?
Um, I am sorry, I didn't, that's a good question. I didn't verify that before. But this, this property is forty acres and that is this two. Right, this is the carport right here. Um, I can verify that with the property owner if you wish and then, yeah.
I'm trying to think how, how we would move forward. Without delaying it, I'll, I'll see what other comments other folks have. Is there further questions for staff?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
A number of years back, I worked with Mr. Young on some of these violations that occur. He has to work through a manager and he's somewhat remote himself due to other commitments. But I have to stick up for him. He's, he's a legitimate man that, that does follow through on these things and tends to, to solve them, maybe not at the pace we want them solved, but he does get to the bottom of them through his use of a manager at the place. And to answer your question, I vaguely remembered that the utilities run. Uh, it would be on the backside of that particular piece of property from having been out there before. Uh, when he took this on or took ownership of this, it really had a lot of violations. So, uh, anyway, I, I guess I'm confident that he'll pursue the other violations if we approve this is where I'm headed with that, having worked with him before.
Yeah, he has been in the, in the, the department several times and I have spoke to him on the phone several times. Right now, the, the violation that, um, on the subject property, the one that is left are three more. It was, I believe it was nine before when the conditional use permit of CU ninety-nine thirty-seven was reviewed in January. I believe it's about seven to nine violations and then it's, has been addressed. Those have been addressed. There's four more right now. So if this conditional use permit is approved, one of the violation will be resolved. And then there's other three violation that will be addressed and then that will be for review in, I believe in April or, or May. Like, yeah, probably be in April.
Mr. Chair. Go ahead.
My, my only comment is I, I agree. I think if we approve of this, it's taken care of two, two of the violations that they're known of right away. I do, you know, I don't disagree with this commission on, you know, kind of holding back on some of these other ones, but these other two are going to take quite a while to, to. complete, I think, for number one, you have to have titles for junk cars and if you don't have them, then you have to get a tow company. Uh, mobile home also takes quite a bit of work to get, to get that dissolved, not only with title work and going through, so that's good, those are gonna take some work. But it sounds like the applicant has been diligent on, on working through these and moving forwards and, and I'd be supportive of the motion or taking care of these.
Thank you. Further questions for staff? Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Hearing none, seeing none, um staff recommendation is for approval of conditional use permit twenty one dash uh CU twenty one dash zero seven with twenty one conditions, is there a motion?
I'm approval.
Second. Motion and second for approval, further discussion.
Uh just one point, uh just so that we know in our, our approval of this one, all we're approving is for forty one eighty seven and forty one ninety nine.
Correct.
That is based on the staff recommendation. Thank you.
That is correct. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Brings us to item ten.
Cootiesack Planning Department, item ten is conditional use permit twenty one dash zero eight. It's to allow a vacation home rental in a suburban res- residential district. The applicant and owner is Joseph Wright, he is in the audience if there's any questions. Uh the size of the lot is one point oh four acres, it is own suburban residential district which requires a sixty five hundred square foot acre minimum. The surrounding property is also zone suburban residential. When approving conditional use permits, we look at seven criteria. Number one, a vacation home rental takes place entirely within an existing residence and should not be detrimental or endanger the pu- public health, safety or general welfare of the public. Uh number two, vacation home rentals are considered a residential use, therefore this conditional use permit should not change the residential use of the property and thus should not have any long-term negative effects on the use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity. Also, the subject property is within Edelweiss Mountain um subdivision, which has multiple vacation home rentals within the subdivision. Uh number three, allowing this conditional use permit should not affect the normal orderly development or improvement of the surrounding vacant property in the area at Weisum um Mountain Development has multiple vacation home rentals within the subdivision as well. Uh number four, the subject property is served by community water and sewer and access will be taken off of an approach off Frederick Lane. Uh number five, the access to the property will be provided via Frederick Lane. Uh number six, the current zoning is suburban residential districts, vacation home rentals are allowed in the district with the conditional use permit. The lot size is one point oh two acres, which meets the required size for suburban residential district as well as operating a vacation home rental. Number seven, the future land use of the property is suburban residential district, which allows for a single family residence as a primary use. Vacation home rentals are an accessory use that which is allowed through a conditional use permit. Uh, property history, there is a single family residence on the property, septic is through the community sewer system. There is a current violation for operating a vacation home rental without uh conditional use permit. If conditional use permit twenty one dash zero eight is a, is approved, the violation on the property will be resolved. This was rather around for department comments, uh county highway came back and said they had no comments, this is in the Edelro- Edelweiss Road District and does not impact. Drainage, Edelweiss Mountain Development has over twenty vacation home rentals advertised between Airbnb and VRBO. Uh the applicant has supplied a copy of the South Dakota lodging license and a sales tax license. Staff performed a site visit on Friday and verified that there is two fire, or a fire extinguisher on each level and smoke detectors in each um bedroom. So staff is recommending approval of conditional use permit twenty one dash zero eight with
Fifteen.
Fifteen conditions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff on this item?
Mister Chairman.
Go ahead Kathy.
I just, did you hear from any of the uh neighbors or any of the comments on, on this? Did you get any response from?
Uh the only comments we got is what you guys received and I believe that there are some people who are here in the audience today who would like to speak on the matter.
Uh we received comments? I don't think I.
Should be in your packet.
There was one.
Better than hearing from someone. Okay, I can see them, sorry. And so that, okay, I'm sorry, I'll be, I'd like to hear from the others, but how, this really I mean pertains to this, but it's really a little more broad, but how is, how do you generally discover that there's, that the VHR is being operated without a proper permit? How, well, how does that work?
It's, it's usually a, a neighbor complaint.
Against one.
They call our ordinance enforcement officer and he investigates, um he'll go on Airbnb and VRBO and if he finds the property um it confirms that they're running a vacation home rental and he checks to see if there is a conditional use permit. And if there's not, then he opens the violation for it.
I see. So generally by complaint is how they're discovered?
Correct, yes.
I'm gonna extend on that. Does the county ever go looking? Seems to me with GIS capabilities, you could cop, you know, when you get on one of these websites, they got little dots all over the place and could we make dots on our own GIS thing and overlap the maps and say, huh?
So you mean like if there's a house there or not, or?
I'm, I'm just saying, has, has the county investigated going, going and looking for any of these beyond complaints at this point?
We don't, we don't go looking for violations, um complaint base really only.
Got it.
Mister Chairman, I have one question. Um, is the applicant the contact person?
Yes, he is.
Okay, I didn't see, do you list that in your letter, your vacation?
In the.
Missed that.
In in condition eleven, it, it'll, it states that.
Oh, it's in your conditions?
Yeah.
Okay.
It says.
I look at you, I tried to look at your checklist sheet and it didn't, I, I don't see that on there, you must get a separate notification from them or something on that.
Yeah, they, in part of the application process, they put who their local contact is and he put himself as the local contact.
It must be on your paperwork then.
Correct, that's submitted to the office, yeah.
Thank you.
Mister Chairman.
Go ahead Kathy.
I just wanna comment, you know, I managed the Edelweiss subdivision in the early eighties. And this has been a problem entire time. For thirty five years, they have been fighting between the owner occupied people and those people who own it, but they wanna rent it out. Whether they wanna rent it out for a week, a month or a year, the other side is always opposed. You know, so I, I'm not surprised that we have people commenting that they don't like it, I know they don't like it. You know, that's just the way it is.
Thank you. Further comments for staff? Okay, first speaker request form we have is from uh Kate um Perrin?
Close Perrin.
Perrin, thank you.
Thank you.
Please state your name for the record and.
My name is Kate Perrin, thank you commissioners for allowing me to speak on this matter. So my husband and I live a stone's throw from this property, we live on Danube Lane. So Edelweiss Mountain is a very special place to many of us, in fact, it's our Eden. For my husband and I, being able to live here year round represents a dream we have worked over twenty years to accomplish. To own a home in the Black Hills that is peaceful, secluded and tranquil. However, the tranquility we enjoyed during the winter months is totally obliterated by the time tourist and vacation season kicks into high gear, which is usually about five months out of the year. The impact of having so many vacation rentals operating simultaneously has big impacts on those of us who live here year round. Currently on Edelweiss Mountain, approximately fifty out of the seventy four homes are rentals and these include second homes like that are occupied by families, as well as nightly tourist rentals. Primarily due to the nightly tourism rentals, there is definitely a significant increase first and foremost in traffic. There's a steady constant stream of both vehicles and ATVs tearing along many streets in the neighborhood that are very narrow to begin with. I know how narrow they are because I walk three miles round trip down to our mailboxes every day to get our mail and part of my cardio involves jumping out of the way to avoid being here. Quiet hours, quiet hours are typically ignored because people on vacation just tend to be excited and because of that, they get loud, they get very loud. It's the kid outside screaming with mom outside screaming at kid, with dad screaming at mom who's screaming at kid. Not to mention the loud music and bla- blaring car horns indicating, hey, it's time to get in the car without any regard to those who live nearby. We also get inundated with litter, consisting largely of cigarette butts, many still smoldering as well as beer cans, beer bottles and discarded energy drinks. There's an abundance of dog waste along the roads. The garbage pickup at the dumpsters has to be increased from once a week to twice a week. And we even have visitors lighting bonfires despite the county ordinances, MRHOA covenants and the obvious risks to having an open flame a few feet from the border of the national forest. Beyond the social impact of so many vacation rentals surrounding us, there's also an environmental impact. For instance, for the past sixteen days, one third of our development has been without water due to unidentified leaks in our water system. Those of us who are fortunate enough to still have water have been asked to conserve so as not to tax the reservoirs and run the wells dry. To date, I'm told we have lost over a hundred and seventy thousand gallons of water. Keep in mind, we only have three reservoirs to service this entire development. Revo- reservoirs that hold approximately twelve thousand gallons of water, seventeen thousand gallons of water and twenty thousand gallons of water respectively. What if this had happened at the height of vacation season? Think about the impact that thirty vacation rentals has on our water system. When taking into consideration that each rental has the capacity to house anywhere from between five to fourteen people on average per day. With each of those five to fourteen people presumably taking two showers a day, doing an abundance of laundry, running the dishwasher and et cetera. Understandably, on the heels of the pandemic and so many states being under lockdown, including the one from which we moved, it's understandable that there's now a heightened interest in South Dakota. Both as a permanent residence or simply as a place to live, I'm sorry, as simply as a place to visit and be able to live your life. However, since we already have approximately fifty out of seventy four homes operating as rentals, our ask is that, or my ask is that the commissioners please consider our sanity as well as the environmental impact of allowing even more properties to operate as nightly vacation rentals. Please consider hitting pause on approving any conditional, any additional conditional use permits on Edelweiss Mountain until the social and environmental impact is closely examined. Especially as it pertains again to our water supply and certainly to our right to use to use and enjoyment of our home and neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Go ahead Kathy.
Uh did you just recently move there?
Yes, so my husband came in December of twenty nineteen and I followed in May of twenty twenty once we got our house back in Pennsylvania, so.
Yeah, okay. Were, at the time that you moved there, did you understand that there was a lot of vacation rentals in the area?
It's such a great question. No, we didn't understand to the degree, what we were told were a lot of the homes were like second homes, like you own the home and in the summertime, you and your family come and occupy it. But we certainly had no idea that we also had the nightly vacation rentals to contend with.
So the um, the other thought I was just gonna ask you about, you know, the, the noise and the um trash and so on. You know, they, there is um a um, a, a system really where you can lodge those complaints as nuisance complaints.
Oh, okay.
And um, and they get, can get acted upon, you know, in a timely fashion to try to manage those kinds of things, cause that shouldn't be happening. I mean, those, those kinds of things are obviously clearly not supposed to happen, so um uh perhaps that the, the staff could help you understand the opportunities you could have to, to um report those and get them, get them handled.
That'd be great. And since I am new to the development, are those types of complaints typically addressed promptly? Or does it take some doing to get it resolved?
I really don't know. I think the best person to, to talk to maybe is Ms. Molitor, the
Okay.
She could help you out, understanding that a little bit, cause I really don't know.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have a question. Um, who controls your water? Is there a board or is there a water association, or something like that?
That's a good question. We do have a board. I'm not sure if they control the water. I mean, we do have people up there that are working to identify where the leaks are coming from right now.
Okay. And is there a homeowners association?
Yes.
And is there a road district?
I'm sorry, is there?
A road district? Yes, there is. Okay. I don't have any further questions.
Mister Chair.
Go ahead.
Do you have, do you know if you have covenants in your neighborhood?
We do, we seemingly have a lot of them.
Do you know if they restrict vacation home rentals?
No, because we were told that they really don't have the authority to do that, that it's the commission that has the authority to set those parameters.
So we don't, we actually don't uh get into covenants uh a- as the board.
Oh, okay.
Those are a private contract between the folks that live in the subdivision.
My suggestion was going to possibly be a legal fix instead of another question, have we ever set a limit on how many houses in a development can be vacation home rentals? That might have been a good thing to do.
No, I mean, the, the vacation home rentals are, are based on the size of the lot and then you have to have adequate water and sewer. Those types of things, which is why I was uh asking about boards, HOAs, road districts, those types of things as opposed to cause you're not here representing those boards asking for any sort of pause in, in approval of various items. You're here for yourself.
Yeah, and my sanity.
Go ahead.
And, and I'll, I'll just say, you know, not only the commission, but this commission uh had gone through vacation home rental applications and, and so forth, what was it, about four years ago, five years ago? Brittany, and so they created some of these restrictions to minimum one acre lots and, and conditional use permits to address safety and so forth, cause they understand that this is gonna happen in our community, in our area. People want second homes and wanna be able to rent them out in order to have uh income to help pay for them, cause they're quite expensive, but a- as Brittany will tell you, we have some of those conditions, but these, this area has went over the, the permitting for vacation home rentals pretty intensively in the last four or five years. So the biggest thing is, as they've said, is if you have a concern to complain, number one, if, if it was this property, I would get the contact person's name for that property, be calling that person if that's the one you know how to do that with.
Sure.
I mean, that'd be the simplest way and most effective way, otherwise you'd be calling sheriff's department uh our office making your concerns or something along those lines. But the contact person for those homes would probably be your, your fastest response as far as if, if there's somebody there that's making noise.
Yeah.
You know, the person who owns that house would take care of that immediately.
Yeah, I think that, and that's a great point. I think the frustration we've had thus far is that even when you do get in contact with the owner, sometimes there, you know, if you're forty miles away, if you're five hundred miles away, really, what is it bothering you? You know what I mean? It's just a little bit different of an experience when you're the next door neighbor and you're contending with it every day. Cause then you're like bearing the full brunt of that impact. Or someone might say, well, they'll be gone in five days and not speaking to this property, but with other properties that have been nuisance, that's typically the response, like, oh, they'll be out of there in five days. And then somebody else is coming in, you know, or we've been told, oh, it's only a couple months in the summertime, just stay inside. Well, it kinda defeats the purpose of use and enjoyment of your property, you know what I mean? So.
Further questions?
Mister Chairman.
Go ahead Charlie.
One for, this would, if it was approved, would be reviewed in a year. And lack of performance is part of the review, it's very thoroughly reviewed. Um, that's something to consider. And I've had people say, ah, the county never takes away a conditional use permit. I sat on a commission that took two of them away. So, don't, and it wasn't vacation home rentals, but they, they will uh vote against the conditional use permit on review. You can lose it for lack of performance, in other words. By the board, it'll still come before this board.
Oh, okay, good to know.
My second thing is kind of a question for you, Sandra. It was always my understanding that Edelweiss uh when set up by Mr. Allison, when he put that property up and, and you were back there in those days, was the first property that allowed on the titles and deeds to have vacation home rentals before this was ever a uh, a cut and dried thing. It, was that your understanding, since you managed or helped run it?
Well, I, I do not recall there being, well, certainly there was nothing excuse me, nothing in the covenants that, that addressed that. Uh in fact, it seems to me the covenants of the nineteen eighties, you know, prohibited that. But then we went on. But then we went on, you know? And every other year, you would amend the covenants to allow them or not allow them, or allow them or not allow them, depending upon how many people came to the meeting to vote.
Yeah.
And what side of the fence they were on.
So it was addressed to covenants, not as a property use restriction on the, the Mylar or anything like that?
No, no, it was addressed on the covenants, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Further questions for Mrs. Perrin? Thank you.
May I ask one more question?
Go ahead.
In the case, if a property does become a nuisance and we do have to repeatedly call in complaints, at what point, like, is there a, okay, you've reached ten complaints, now it's coming under review? Like, can you explain that process too?
I might lean on staff to do that, and it probably has to do with the severity of how the complaints come in and, and some of those things.
Cody, I guess my, the question that I would have, based on what she just said, was, uh, at what point do you say it comes back before the board? I'm, I'm assuming that you try to resolve it with the landowner first before it comes back before the board?
Yes, um, so, Cozak Planning Department. Basically, the avenue is, is you would contact Dwayne Allen, our ordinance enforcement officer. He'd go out and do a site visit to see if the, um, complaint was valid. And then, um, it can be brought back in front of the board at the direction of the planning commission or at the direction of the board of commissioners. So if it, if it got too out of hand, um, and too many complaints, the, the planning commission or the board of commissioners can request it to come back at any time that they want to, to cure it again prior to that one here.
So there's not an internal, uh, there's five complaints, it's now time to review it type of a thing? I think that's what you're trying to get at, right?
Correct.
What, what is the, what's the mechanism to move to the next step?
Brittany Molitor, again, if there's several substantiated complaints, um, our ordinance enforcement, he will go out doing, you know, a check. He will contact the sheriff's department to see if there's calls. Um, if there is substantiated complaints, it will be brought again, um, in front of this board with that information.
So several is the answer, and then after substantiated?
Yes, uh, typically, Dwayne tries to work with the, um, property owners first before it's brought in front of this board.
Noted, thank you.
Can I add one, Brittany? However, if it comes up again, you've taken a tougher road, haven't you? If it, you haven't had that many, but you have in your mind. In other words, if the same thing, let's say it went to review, and it gets passed, but they've, they've, in other words, ruffled a lot of feathers along the way, and they get, they get put back into business. If that same thing comes up again, your office, I assume, takes a much different view of that.
Correct, or there could be an additional, um, condition that is added. Um, conditional use permits are typically reviewed at least every, once, you know, it's approved, then in a year, and then it's every three years.
That was my point. You take additional action, is what I'm saying.
Correct, so if there's something that comes up and Dwayne works with the property owners and it triggers another condition that may need to be added, then it will be brought in front of this board, um, to add that condition.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Further questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, does anyone else in the audience wish to speak on this item? Sir, if you could please state your name for the record when you get to the.
My name is Joseph Wright, I'm the owner of this cabin that you're looking at here. Um, so just wanted to share with you a little bit about, uh, our dream. Um, I have five kids, um, they're getting older, some of them in high school. And our, our whole goal was, in building this cabin, was so that we could have an opportunity to teach our kids how to work. And so we built this cabin ourselves with our own hands. Um, I did all the framing, all the, the windows, all the trim in the interior of this cabin, the purpose being that this is something special to us. And, um, i- in order to help finance it, we have, um, made it a, a vacation rental, but with a lot of limits on our, our own. Um, when we accept any, any renters, um, we make sure they're families. Uh, we don't have any partyers up there. We've heard some crazy stories about some, some places where they would have loud parties and stuff. If that ever occurs, I'd hope that my neighbors would let me know immediately. Um, because that's not acceptable in this cabin, it means a lot to us. And this is, uh, this is kind of our paradise as well. Um, so, um, our, our, our subdivision is a kind of close-knit group. I know that, um, we, um, we need more houses up there, and the reason we do is our infrastructure is really struggling. Right now, we have an issue with, uh, water and, and, and our, 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 our infrastructure is starting to break down because of age. And the only way we're gonna be able to maintain the kind of quality up there is if we have enough houses and enough fees, because we pay pretty hefty HOA fee every year. And in addition, any assessed fees, um, would be on those lots that are developed, um, as well. So we, you know, this is a good thing as far as getting enough houses up there, because it supports an infrastructure that is aging. And, um, and so, uh, we love this house, we take care of it. We want people, our neighbors, to know that if there's any issues, we'll be there, spot on. We live just down here in Rapid, we're about twenty-five minutes away. Um, so if we get a call, uh, we'll be up there taking care of it immediately, so, thanks.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Wright?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Do, do you have cameras up there, like Ring or anything like that, just to keep an eye on things, just in case?
No, we, we don't have any cameras at this time, but that's probably a good idea, yeah.
It, it's not a, a bad idea to have Ring, it's affordable, that way you can check instantly what's happening, just an idea to throw out there.
Okay, further questions for Mr. Wright?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone else in the audience wish to speak on this item? Yeah, but please come forward to me.
I just wanted to add one thing, and actually, this might be a direct question for Mr. Wright, but it was our understanding that he's purchased two additional lots to build rentals on. So while I appreciate that this one was hand-built and is, you know, there's sentimental value for it, excuse me, the concern is that this is more of like a business venture, really, um, than some sort of personal tie. That's just my observation, personal tie to the development, again, versus those of us who do live there year-round. Thank you.
Can you address it if you want?
Yeah.
Not necessary.
I mean, just sharing kind of our plan. Um, like I said, we have five kids, um, we bought two more lots. We were up Saturday cutting the trees off of one that we have a building permit from you guys to build another cabin. Um, I want my kids to know how to build houses, um, that was what I did in another life, and so this is a goal of ours. My son is gonna do more of the laying out of the, the house this time and, and do the framing, so we're doing all the work on the second one as well. Um, our third lot is not big enough for an Airbnb, so there won't be an Airbnb in that house. That will be ours for, 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 um, retirement. But we do plan on, on running the next one as an Airbnb if we can get a conditional use permit for it, so, yeah.
Thank you. Comments, anything else, anybody else in the audience?
Mr. Chairman, just one more for Karen. I don't know whether the board's even aware of it. Hill City County Council is reviewing in their, uh, percentage of, uh, total homes versus vacation home rentals. And Hill City was one of the leaders, of course, and so was Edelweiss in vacation all around. But just to answer your question, it's not something, and I can tell you for sure, it's not something either of our committees ever reviewed.
Thank you. With that, um, staff is recommending approval of conditional use permit, CU twenty-one dash zero eight, with fifteen conditions. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, no. Motion carries. Brings us to item eleven.
Cozak Planning Department, item eleven is Vacation of Plat VP twenty-one dash zero two. It's to vacate notes on plat for Lot Four, Block One, in Mountain Meadows subdivision. The applicant and landowner is Allen and Tamara Schmidt. Uh, the current lot size is three-point-oh-three acres, it's vacant of any, um, structures, and it's planned unit development. Uh, staff is recommending to continue Vacation of Plat VP twenty-one dash zero two to the March twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one Planning Commission meeting. As the applicants are also, uh, have applied for some subdivision regulation variances that were continued until the, um, March sixteenth, twenty-twenty-one Board of Adjustment meetings. Those variances need to be approved before, um, any, any motion on, uh, the Vacation of Plat twenty-one dash zero two can be, can be done.
Okay, is there questions for staff on this item?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Cody, I'm always picking on you. Could you provide in the next time when this comes up, those notes? I tried to read those darn things with a magnifying glass, and I'm telling you, they're tiny to read very much for an old geezer, so.
Yeah, I'll make a, um, I'll put, I'll put the plat in there still, but I'll, I'll put an image of the actual.
Thanks, so I know what we're dealing with when it says to vacate notes, and I'm going... My first question was, what notes? And I'm going, oh, Cody's gonna shoot me.
No, I can, I can definitely do that.
Just for the next meeting, thank you.
Absolutely.
I'll, uh, I guess I was looking at these notes. Um, and my concern is, it looks like they're trying to vacate some substantial notes that were listed on the plat. These notes don't show up on plats by accident, likely as a requirement for approval.
Correct.
And my concern is, is that, what, why? I'm reading this whole thing, and I thought, what, what am I missing?
So those, those notes on the plat are for their, when Mountain Meadows was, um, platted, those were the subdivision regulations, those were how they were gonna meet the subdivision regulations for water, fire mitigation, and sewer. Um, the developer who was developing Mountain Meadows, um, stopped, and it was, it was supposed to be fifty lots, they stopped at thirteen. Um, then I believe they had the funding to continue on with the rest of it. Um, so those notes on the plat were there for the future development, but since there's no future development, the thirteen lots are now stuck with those, those notes on the plat. In order to get rid of those notes on the plat to, to build their house, they have to go through the subdivision regulation variances, because that's, those notes were how they were meeting, that subdivision was meeting those, those regulations. So in order to, to build on the property without meeting those, they need the variances and to vacate the note on the plat.
I can't imagine, though, that they, um, have the, have a system in place that would replace sprinkler system requirements and those types of things, do they?
Uh, so my understanding is that the, so they're connected to the Rushmore Ranch Water, um, Association. There are some fire hydrants now that are in Mountain Meadows, um, that they're, that they're saying that is, meets their fire mitigation, plan for fire mitigation. Um, we're still working to see if... The Water Association said that they have enough adequate water storage. Um, however, we don't know yet if that's for just to live there, you know, drinking water, showers, stuff like that, or if it also includes fire suppression as well. We're still working with the, the Water Association on that.
I'll wait till the March twenty-second, uh, Planning Commission meeting, I guess, to hammer through the rest of the questions I had. This is item eleven. Further questions for staff on this item?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Charlie.
This is really a two-sided issue when you're talking the water and the safety, in that the, the safety requirements of the testing that's done out of those fire hydrants. And for me, as a commission member, this really concerns me, is kind of a moving target a little bit. It's ever-increasing because the efficiency and the volume of these, the emergency equipment is ever-increasing. And I understand where these folks are coming from, meeting those requirements. However, it was also a very important thing that was put on there in the first place. And, and we, I think we gotta look at that, whether it's thirteen homes, forty homes, or a hundred and forty homes. Um, to say that you have sufficient water, boy, compared to some of these testing requirements they've got for the, uh, the hydrants, that's, that's, that's quite a statement. Because the, the pumping rate out of certain-sized hydrants, six-inch, eight-inch, varies, and it's a lot of water. And water for firefighting, for these volunteer firefighting departments around here is so, so critical. They have to go miles to get water many times. So, I, I'm just saying, this is not an easy thing. And, and you, and any information you can provide is how they come up with their adequate, would certainly help us. Or the applicant, if they, they have done the testing, what testing have they got? Thank you.
Any questions for Cody on this? Okay. Uh, staff is recommending to continue Vacation of Plat VP twenty-one dash zero two to the March twenty-second Planning Commission meeting. Uh, noting that, is there anybody in the audience that wishes to discuss anything on this item? Hearing none, seeing none, um...
So move to, what, continue VP twenty-one dash oh-two until, what meeting was it, the twenty-second?
March twenty-second.
Twenty-second.
Second.
Motion and second, to continue VP twenty-one dash zero two to the March twenty-second Planning Commission meeting. Further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Brings us to item twelve.
Item twelve is Comprehensive Plan Amendment CA twenty dash zero four, to amend the comprehensive plan to change the future land use from low-density residential and rural residential district and open-space district to ranchette residential district in accordance with Sections two-oh-six, two-oh-seven, and five-a-way of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. Um, current zoning districts within half a mile of this request are general agriculture, limited agriculture, and low-density residential. The future land use within a half a mile is open-space ranchette residential and rural residential district. This request was routed, and no concerns were noted. This request is in harmony with the future land use designation and comprehensive plan, and so staff is recommending approval of this request.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff on this item? Seeing none, hearing none. Um, we do have, uh, a person on Zoom call, uh, for a speaker request on this item. Uh, and I have your name as, as Judy, and that's all I have right now. So if you could introduce yourself and, and go ahead? We, we can't hear you, you might have to unmute yourself.
Testing, can you hear me now?
I can hear you now, yeah, if you would please start again.
I will be glad to. Thank you, commissioners, for taking the time for this. My name is Judy Lang, L-A-N-G. I am the general partner of Ford Mountain Ranch, which is an adjacent property to the development proposed by Mr. Grover. And, um, we had a partners' meeting over the weekend, and so I'm here to represent three people and our extended families. So we're all heirs of the original Ford Mountain Ranch brothers, who are my grandfather and his brother. Um, we've had a, a ranch in that place for over a hundred years as a family, so, um, pretty deep commitment to the Hill City area and to the, to the Black Hills in general. We understand that Mr. Grover has purchased the property legally and has, he has the right to develop, but we just have concerns about access via one road. We have one road that comes in, served for a hundred years. It's, it's an old county, uh, country road, sorry, not a county road. It's a, a cow path. And, um, yeah, trucks can come in and out, but it's not a great road. And Mr. Grover's, uh, proposed subdivision comes right up to our road and uses the road. We are, we are very interested in how that road will be maintained when we add a whole lot of other traffic, uh, new residences, the construction traffic. And, um, given what I just was listening into, goodness, the proposed...
Looks like she locked up.
Yep, we lost her.
Mrs. Lang, if, if you can hear me, sometimes it works to turn off your, um, your video feed and just do audio feed. But you're still currently locked up on our end. While we work to get her back, could you, uh, maybe continue on with, or kind of explain the road that she's talking about?
Sure.
Hi, hello, this, this is John Hicks, I'm one of the other partners, and I was listening in. I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, go ahead, Mr. Hicks.
Right, thank you, sir. Uh, I, I noticed that, uh, Judy, uh, lost her feed, and she might be working on reconnecting. Um, and I agree with her as... And I agree with her as far as the question about the road, that's, that is Towering Pines Lane, by the way. And, um, there could be some significant problems, um, with wear and tear on that. There's also questions about, uh, water. Will there be enough water for, um, all of the lots? Now, I don't know if, I think actually, uh, the one that we might be concerned mostly about is item number 13, which is the 69.84 acres. I think that's the one that's just to the north of Ford Mountain Ranch. But, um, all that being said, uh, if the, uh, the lots that are in question are right to the north of Ford Mountain Ranch, and I believe that's the 69.84 acres. There's a question of will there be enough water for those 10 lots? And if there is enough water there, will that water then, there'll be no water left for Ford Mountain Ranch, which turns Ford Mountain Ranch into a desert. Uh, then the other question, a big question is, uh, control of sewage runoff so that it doesn't, so the sewage does not ruin the fresh water that goes into the well at Ford Mountain Ranch. And, um, that's about all we discussed in our meeting yesterday.
Okay. Is there questions?
Oh, the, well, that, that kind of is the question. The question is, uh, will, we're, we're, we're mostly, we're concerned that the, um, subdivision, if it goes in, does not impact Ford Mountain Ranch in, um, in such a negative way that, well, for one example, we, we, we're worried that we may not be able to get in and out on Towering Pines Lane if there's a significant erosion of, of, of that road. Uh, and we're concerned about not enough water to serve all the houses that are planned. And all, then we're concerned about sewage. So, um, I guess the question would be, can the Planning Commission address those, uh, problems?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Charlie.
Can I ask Mr. Hicks?
Yep.
Then, and it, I guess to put them together to some eyes, uh, your concern is the density of what we're talking about with this neighboring property.
Right, yes. It's, as, I know, um, there's been talk about making it a 10, 10 acre lots instead of five acre lots, which, that would change it from 10 lots to five, I guess. And that might, uh, that might mitigate problems. Although, uh, if, if there's water runoff that runs down from the, um, Mills subdivision, I think is what he was calling it, if it runs down onto Towering Pines Lane, that runoff could cause a real problem with that, uh, with that road, with Towering Pines Lane.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Further, uh, comment or questions for Mr. Hicks?
Did you say from me or?
Yeah, no, for, for you. I, I was asking the board here if they've got questions for you, sir.
Sorry, yeah.
Yep. And it looks like we have Judy, uh, back.
Great.
Do you wanna go ahead, Judy, and finish your concerns?
Thank you, John, for stepping in. My, I, I live remotely. I live in the woods and sometimes my connection is wobbly. I apologize. Are you able to hear me and see me now?
Yes.
Thank you so much. As I was saying, we, we just wanna be good neighbors, but we also want to protect the heritage of the property we have, which is currently leased to a businessman and cattle operation in the area. We want to protect his interests as well. That's Mr. Henderson. I'm wondering if a storm water management.
Uh-oh. I think we lost her again.
Yep.
Hey.
Mr. Chairman, can we, uh, Whitney, I, I mean Brittany come up, Whitney, Brittany come up and explain about the road? That, that's a, a big factor here and both indicated in their conversation that that was a concern to them. What will happen as far as building permits if, in other words, we switch this zoning, allow this particular thing? Talk to me about the road.
So that Towering Pines Road is the one that is circled up there. To my understanding, there's only Lot A that is the one that would take access off of that road. In order to get access off of the road, I did, uh, reach out to Ms. Lang, um, to get documentation on that easement, to see what the easement has said and work with the state's attorney's office. If that is a private access easement, um, what are the conditions of that easement? To see if Lot A can take access, like I said, um, working through that process. This is just part of the process to finalize this plat. They do need to get the rezone and the comprehensive plan amendments, um, approved to continue on with their plating process. But to my understanding, the only lot to take access off Towering Pines would be Lot A through that 33 foot wide access easement. If you look to the north along there, um, Lot C and Lot F would take access off of that current road that they're constructing right now that they have a permit for. He has obtained a construction permit, stormwater permit from our office to construct that road that will be through there.
Okay, so then just to summarize, only Lot A is the one that's under review at this time to take access. But that isn't even firmed up yet. Uh, because of the, following through with the process for the plating and everything else.
Right, the plat hasn't, the final plat hasn't been approved and signed and filed. This is just part of the process to be granted, like especially the next, uh, request for the rezone.
Right, and the road he has indicated as access to those other lots, um, it meets a different building requirement.
Correct, because that will be my understanding and, uh, the applicant is in the audience. All of the access off of those will be through that lot. Whether or not he creates a road district, um, for that road, um, would be, you know, up to him through that process. Because it is a private, um, access easement through there. But to my understanding, Lot A is the only one that I can see. Towering Pines Road would be a second means of ingress and egress to get out of there in, in the event that something would happen. It is not a significantly improved road. So, I mean, it's accessible, but as far as being improved, especially to the standard, I believe that that's Mills Ranch Road now. That that one is going to be, um, it is not improved to the, those kinds of standards.
Okay, and then to summarize that, in other words, then only the, uh, emergency, uh, egress would possibly be considered from the other lots. I, I'm trying to answer the Ford, uh, uh, mountain road and ranch people. So that they know what we're looking at as far as the roads, because that is one of their, their points here.
Right.
So, a, and that's a, a normal thing that you prescribed through conditions.
Right, so as part of the subdivision regulations, they do require road improvements. So the road improvements would be, um, that Mills Ranch Road, um, Towering Pines Road. But because only one of those lots as part of this plat is taking direct access off of Towering Pines Road, you know, it's some question as far as, um, what is required. We are working through our subdivision regulations right now, which don't address this actual zoning district. So once those subdivision regulations are in place for what that zoning district will require for a ranchette, it will be similar to what our low-density residential, um, or our new rural residential zoning districts are when we look at access. With agriculture, there is no required width and size in our subdivision regulations right now.
Going to be looking at the section 14 as far as like roads for this?
The ordinance 14.
Yes, ordinance 14.
The ordinance 14 standards, this isn't on a section line road or a county highway road. So that is some of the question too. They would still have to follow the subdivision regulations for improvements to that road. He is going to do, um, a, a fairly nice road. It's a 24 foot wide road, um, gravel.
So it may not meet all the requirements of the 14 because, uh, it's the size of the development here or the, the rezone, the ranchettes, and plus it isn't addressed yet in our, our, thank you.
Go ahead.
Brittany, if I may, um, so Lot A, is it your, or do you have even an understanding? Is it, even though it takes access on Towering Pine Road, is the idea that it, when it takes access to the west and meets that road, will it, will the traffic then turn left and then go back, go down and then access the new road? Mills, Mills Road that goes across? Or will the traffic turn right and then end up at the Old Hill City Road? And the reason that I think, and, and I, it doesn't really apply to item number 12 here, but I think eventually it'll apply because, you know, the Towering Pines Road, certain things about it can be improved. I mean, it's an awful road now. It's really got full of ruts and holes and, I mean, it's bad. But that can be fixed. Well, what can't be fixed is that intersection with the twin, with the Old Hill City Road. You know, that's a terribly dangerous intersection, because it comes in from the south. To get on the Old Hill City Road, turning to the east, it's an acute angle. So you have to turn, you know, maybe like a 30 degree angle to get on the Old Hill City Road. At the same time, the traffic coming from Hill City, um, to the east, it's up the hill and around the corner. So you can't see traffic coming from the west. At the same time, you're making this crazy turn, 30 degree turn to the, to the right. And I mean, this really is a dangerous intersection and, and that can't be fixed. I mean, without some major, major, major construction. So, um, I just, I guess I would hope that Lot A, the plan for Lot A would really be to, just traverse Towering Springs or Towering Pines in a very short distance. And then get on the, the new road and then get to Old Hill City Road. Do you know, have any understanding of how that's planned?
Can I interrupt? Should we ask whether Mr. Hicks is still on, so the Ford Mountain?
Uh, yes, yes, I've been listening, yes.
Thank you.
That question might be better responded to by the applicant. He is in the audience. Just a, just a history on the Towering Pines Lane. That was actually named, it's always been kind of an easement. It was named, um, because Bob Drew came through and this was a plat that was done five or six years ago, to, as part of an estate dispersal that they had to subdivide some of the property. So at that time, because of some of the access, um, Towering Pines Lane had to be named. Um, prior to that, it was just a basic, um, kind of an egg access.
Right.
So just some history.
Yep.
So let's get through, uh, first questions, uh, with staff, uh, and, and Mr. Hicks on the line. And then, uh, the applicant is, uh, wants to speak as well. So is there any further questions for Mr. Hicks online before we go move on?
Not for Mr. Hicks, no.
Okay.
Brittany.
Go ahead. Let's go, finish with Brittany then.
They pointed out water, uh, limited water requirements and septic, uh, controls. They weren't necessarily, or could you explain what would apply if we approve this zoning?
Because this is 14 lots, instead of 15 lots, it doesn't fall under the community water system requirements for the 15 lots and 25, um, individuals. If they determine, if the state comes in and determines that they're, that, you know, they could serve more than 25, then they would have to take action to require a community water system. It is my understanding that there will be individual, um, wells on each of these lots. As far as the onsite wastewater treatment system, our 204J, um, of our ordinance is, is somewhat robust. It does require profile holes and percolation tests. They do look at drainage, um, impacts of that in the placements of that. The applicant, Mr. Grover, he is a certified installer with Pennington County. So he is aware of the requirements, um, under 204J. So.
Thank you.
Anything else for Brittany? Okay.
One, one comment, I think. Just to address like some of the comments with the water and the sewer systems on these. A lot of people, you can install cisterns for the water. You don't have to drill a well on every property. And mound systems are acceptable too, correct?
Correct, and we don't have any requirement if they wanted to have cisterns on each one of those lots, they could haul their own water also.
Okay. Mr. Grover, do you wanna come up, sir? When you get to the lectern, please state your name for the record.
David Grover. And, and Brittany, I apologize, but I have a new plan to submit to you. And the access for Lot A is going to be along that, uh, boundary line between C and D. I just actually built the road, uh, two days ago. It runs, it'll be coming up the, this, that 24 foot wide road that I have and then, uh, following, uh, that line, that property border line, yeah, right there. I put that, I have a road to access Lot A there. I just built, it's all on Lot C. And, uh, so actually every single lot on there will be using the new road that, that I'm gonna be putting in. And, uh, and, and actually in all reality, uh, uh, the Ford Mountain Ranch, I, you know, they can come on Towering Tines and, and, and take a right and use that road to get out of the Old Hill City Road. I mean, it's a private road, but every lot on there is gonna be using that road and, and they can use it also. And I think Brittany already, uh, kind of, uh, explained about the, uh, septic tank and drain fields. With the five acre partials, there's a lot of different places that you could use on any one of these lots to actually get a drain field in. And one of the new owners, I'm, I'm gonna sell one of these lots to, is actually, uh, one of the, uh, owners of Alexander Drilling. And, and I specifically talked to him about what he thought as far as, uh, drilling wells and that. And, and he just thinks that, that there really isn't going to be a problem with that. So, anyway.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Grover?
Mr. John.
Okay, go ahead.
So have you made progress talking to the Forest Service and working out an arrangement for the access to the two, you know, easternmost lots on that Forest Service Road?
I, I have talked to the Forest Service and, and, uh, so you're talking about L and K.
Right, yes.
Yeah, and, and what the deal is, is that, uh, the Forest Service Road actually comes onto my property. As you can see, that there's a, a road and then it hits there on that corner, comes through my property and then back on the Forest Service. So when I'm talking to the Forest Service about it, they first of all told me, well, you gotta get, uh, a permit and, and, uh, yearly, you gotta renew it and all that. And I says, but I'm not going off of your property. I'm onto my property. Your road is on my property. And so all I'm doing is going off of that. And they says, well, then absolutely nothing you can do. And then that lady, she got transferred to Arizona, so then I had to talk to somebody else at Forest Service. And he goes, well, if you go get one of our maps that shows that, that road, uh, I can't remember the, the number through 47th for some reason runs in my mind. But he says, if that's on the map and it's there, then it's just, that's, it's there. It's, it's open to the public road, you know, will always be according to him.
Do they allow you to, um, you know, kind of maintain it?
The what?
To do, just routine maintenance? Do they, do the Forest Service allow you to do the routine maintenance?
You know, I, I haven't approached them on that. But I would, but I, but I would like, I would really like to get something in writing from the Forest Service that they would let me do the routine maintenance on it. And, and I, I can't foresee that they want, because as long as I'm paying for it, they should, it shouldn't bother them. But, uh, and then plus, it's, it's kind of an unusual thing. Not very many Forest Service roads run across private property.
Exactly, uh-huh.
And I, so I got a kind of unusual situation here.
So is your plan then to, to the Forest Service Road, to that, to, to Lot K? And then there would be some, an access across Lot K onto Lot L?
Yeah, you see it, it's on there.
Yeah, that's right. So that's would be how that would go, okay?
Yes.
Yeah, all right.
I have not, I have not done that road yet. Right now, I'm in the process of, my, uh, daughter is, has, is buying Lot J with the old house out and she wants. with the old house out and she wants to renovate it and, and just keep it that way. And she's also talking about K and L. And, and anyway, she wants to keep it all. And so I, I'm not, I don't know about that road, but I have it in there that if I, if I do, uh, do those, that I'll have that road in there. I don't at this point though.
Yeah. So did the fellow that you're working with from Alexander Drilling give you an idea about how deep you thought the wells would have to be?
He, he said that the, uh, what he felt is that, uh, uh, 200-foot is a, would be a kind of a standard well and, uh, and that, and but, but also, uh, excuse me, on, on Lot, on the other side of the road, on Lot B, where Lot B and Lot C, where that corner is there, there is a well there right now. And that well is 75-foot deep and produces, uh, over 18 gallons a minute. And, uh, and of course, and, uh, but Alexander Drilling, he, they drill all over the Black Hills and, and he thought there would be no problem to hit water within 200 feet.
Well, you know, where, where I live and my husband lives just down the way, ours is 160 and we get about a gallon and a half a minute. Really? So I, I mean, there are, I mean, it's, I guess I took a little less optimistic view that, um, you know, water is that abundant. I don't doubt that, that it's available. And I, but I do worry about, and I've said it before, people have heard me before, that, you know, I think that, that overall, there's not an abundance of water because it's not a true aquifer system. You just got to hit the fractures and, you know, hit the, hit the cracks. And that the pressure, the development all, all along that area, Old Hill City Road, it's, it's going to take a toll really, I think, on the water resource over time. And, um, and, and kind of, and change the hydrology of it, um, over time. So, you know, personally, I really wish that these were, that there were some more restrictions on ensuring that these lots were larger. Just in anticipation, you know, not, now if you look at each subdivision by itself, it's probably okay. But if you look at all these subdivisions that are springing up all across, you know, along that road over time, I, I do think we're headed for, you know, a real water shortage. But, I mean, some areas by Custer, they've given up and they, people hauling water. So, I mean, I know that that's an option, uh, that people start putting in cisterns and hauling water, but certainly not, not an ideal solution, I don't think.
You know, actually, ma'am, and with, uh, when I was developing the other side of the road there with the three-acre parcels, a little over a year or two ago, and, uh, and I, you were the one that responded to that, kind of the same direction that you wanted, you thought bigger lots and, and, uh, like at that time, and I guess even, you know, that, uh, for low-density residential could be three acres or so. And you responded to, that you would prefer to have larger lots. And, and actually it was because of your response is why I went with five-acre lots. It's because I thought that might be a, a thing of what's the future would, would have. And, and also, uh, tiny zoning, we're talking about, they're going through this change of zoning regulations and these ranchettes was at five acres or above where it's coming in. And it just seemed a good fit. And, uh, and so anyway, that was one of the reasons why I, I actually went with five acres and above on all these lots.
Well, I certainly agree that five is better than three, but 10 would be better than five.
10 is better, yes, I, I understand, but, uh, anyway.
Additional questions for Mr. Grover? Okay. Thank you, sir. Should we try Judy one more time?
I think I'm back. I apologize. And my screen keeps changing from an image to an image of a telephone. I'm not sure.
I, I would just go ahead and shut off the video aspect of what you're doing and we can just do it via audio, Judy. That will have less of a chance of failure.
I will stop the video gladly. I'm sorry, I missed several minutes in there and I, I cannot account for the problem. It was in a Zoom connection and it just fell apart. Uh, I appreciated hearing the last bit there between Mrs. Johnson and Mr. Grover. Uh, I would agree that water is, water is the precious resource that makes life possible there in the hills for anyone who wants to come and live there or farm there or build homes, you know? So continued attention to the water resources is something I hope the county will, will do. Um, I had a few other questions and I'm not sure that perhaps my brother or sister might have, have introduced any of them in my absence.
Go ahead.
I was asking whether a stormwater management plan has been filed for the proposed subdivision of the 10 or so lots up there.
We'll, we'll have Brittany answer that question.
There has not been one for the overall subdivision. There just has been a stormwater permit applied for, for the dirt work on the road.
Thank you. As I understand it, the road itself, 33-foot wide gravel road that will run roughly east-west through the subdivision to provide access to all those lots, it, it comes to a joint with, um, Towering Pines Lane, which is the road that serves our property, at a downhill angle. And so unless mitigation is built into that road as it's built, it will, just because of the way water flows, it will necessarily dump water into Towering Pines Lane. It will just increase the amount of erosion that already occurs in nature's way of doing things. So before all of that is complete, we need to realize and, and have our interests and that of our, of our tenant down there protected against having our road eroded to the point where it's not usable without a whole lot of maintenance. I'm, um, I have another question. And that is, let's see, I have to look at my notes. What is the county's minimum? We grew up coming to visit our grandparents. I'll say this, that we, we learned over the years that they ranted there 70-plus years, that there are cycles of drought and cycles of wet seasons. And you can't predict them, you can't control them, but you do need to live within them. And when I picture 10 residential wells being drilled, as Mrs. Johnson has said, into, not in aquifer, but just into available groundwater supplies, I, I, I just wonder what kind of mitigation efforts will be, are, are on file? Or is there a regulation stipulating that, that one's water usage cannot impact and deprive your neighbors of water in a drought season? Because we would be the last persons down the road. If the users of the new properties were to use abundant amount of water, we might, we might end up with a dry well. And I'm wondering how we can approach that problem.
I don't know if I have an answer for Mrs. Lang with regards to state well law. Do you know the answer to that? But I don't.
Well, I have general information. As, I'm not a water right expert, but I do know, um, that our state is a first in time, first in right. So wells that were drilled prior to other ones would obviously take precedence over ones that were drilled later. Um, individual water rights, um, the ones that were, um, established under that one well, 18 gallons a minute, those take precedence over, um, appropriated rights. So appropriated rights would be those that are done in a subdivision or that have gained a water right. Um, so that's my basic knowledge of, um, how the state would view that, um, how you would petition the state in the event that you would be concerned that your well, that your drawdown is affected. Um, I'm not aware of, um, what the exact procedure, um, is for that.
Thank you, Ms. Molitor. Um, it's, it's an open question then for us to proceed. And, um, if we have plenty of water in some good years, no problem. It's when we go into a dry cycle, which can last summer after summer, that we all need to be paying attention. I, I heard the previous speaker say that, uh, uh, some, one-third of the subdivision on, um, on the mountain was, was without water because they'd been having some problems. And I thought, wow, that could happen. I'm not just imagining it, that's really happening in the hills. So I want to keep, keep our attention on that. Mr. Grover, this is another item. Mr. Grover has referenced covenants that his, um, his buyers, the buyers of the lots will sign and agree to as condition of purpose, purchase. And I'm curious as to who gets to decide what goes into the covenants? Is there any standard template for those covenants? And who enforces the covenants? Is it simply homeowners association? Or is the county ever involved? Can covenants be amended by people who are, um, a part of them? But also, but if there's a problem with neighbors? I mean, how, I don't know. I've never been in an HOA myself. So I'd love to know more about covenants.
Mrs. Lang, I will tell you that the, that us as the, the Board of Commissioners do not enforce covenants. I might have to lean on the state's attorney here a little bit, but, but covenants are, uh, are an agreement between the landowners, um, uh, that the covenants govern over. We don't, we don't as a board enforce, uh, covenants, being there a private contract essentially between, between the homeowners within the association.
That was my understanding. Thank you for clarifying it. So once the covenants have been drafted and agreed to by the purchasers, it's, it's up to them, it's, it's managing their own neighborhood. I, that's how I understand it. And that takes me back to, perhaps Mr. Grover wants to address this, but, um, the road, which is now called Towering Pines Lane, was named by the county about four years ago. Uh, the road, which will serve his subdivision and also comes all the way down to, to meet Ford Mountain Ranch property. It's an existing road. It's not 33 feet wide by any means and it's subject to a lot of wear and tear. I'm not clearly sure who owns all of the road that covers or serves the properties Mr. Grover now owns. And to the extent his development will impact the, um, the quality and consistent usability of that road, um, how can we approach assuring that that road will be maintained? In the past, we had a private access easement with the Mills Family Partnership from whom he purchased the land. And that worked, but that was just between two parties. And now we're looking at between ourselves and Mr. Drew, who was a, an heir of the Mills family, but also up to 10 homeowners or the HOA. I don't know how to set that up so that we are all assured of that road being maintained.
Mrs. Lang, there, you, you may not be able to see it, but there is a copy of the proposed layout plat, uh, up on our screens.
I can see it.
And there is an access road, um, that the owner is proposing on installing or is in the process of building that runs through the middle of the subdivision. So the, the access to all of the lots that he's proposing is, will be done via that road that intersects Old Hill City Road. Uh, and so there are no direct accesses that are being proposed off of Towering Pines Road?
Towering Pines Lane?
Yeah.
Unless Mr. Grover has changed his plan, the original plan called for two of the lots to have access only off of Towering Pines Lane.
I can't speak to the original plan. I'm not aware of that. Um, we were told in the, in this meeting by Mr. Grover that he has, uh, he will be building an, an additional road between two lots to provide access to Lot A, which was the lot that was required access off of Towering Pines Road. So that, um, that, that's what was mentioned in this meeting. And then it looks like Lot B maybe would take access directly off of Old Hill City Road.
Okay. Thank you so much for that update. That was not something I'd been aware of. That helps some of our concerns. So when I come back to the road issues, it probably comes down mostly to, uh, water runoff that would have impacted our, uh, the quality of Towering Pines Lane, should it be subject to increased erosion by stormwater and snowmelt runoff.
Okay. Yeah, and Mr. Grover, and, and Mr. Grover, please feel free, please come forward, sir. Um, and if I have misrepresented anything that you have said, I am simply trying to manage the communication here. So please.
David Grover again. Yeah, all, every lot will have access only to the new road that I'm putting in. I won't have, none of them will access on Towering Pines anymore. And one of the concerns from Judy was that the runoff of this new road will go on to Towering Tines and wash it out. The, and there is from where Towering, Towering Pines is, and then only about 100-foot of the new road actually will have any runoff going to them. The whole rest of the road all goes to the east. Uh, so there won't be any runoff on that. Uh, I, I know that, uh, there are some questions, um, on how, on that Towering, Towering Pines Road. Um, according to the surveyor that I hired to survey the property pins for me, Towering Pines Road is on my property, that I own it. And, uh, it's, uh, but, and, and, but, uh, Ford Ranch and, and Bob Drew, they all have, uh, the access easement in and out for it that was established many, many, many years ago. And that's always going to continue. Anyway, that's, uh, it's only about 100 feet of the new road will actually have any runoff that will be going on to the Towering Pines.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grover. I don't, I don't really know what a hun, I mean, I know what 100 feet is, obviously. I don't know how much water, the potential for runoff, 100 feet of road consistent. I would anticipate, hopefully, that ditches or culverts would be installed as the road is developed in order to mitigate runoff on to the existing Towering Pines Lane.
It's typically required as part of the subdivision regulations, correct?
Thank you. I'm glad to hear that.
Yes, and it's part of the stormwater permit for the construction of that road. And I was going to mention, um, to the staff that our environmental planner can go out and do a site visit because it is a permit, um, that we can take a look at it, if there's concerns and report back to this planning commission.
Thank you, Ms. Molitor. We would appreciate that a lot. Finally, and this wasn't in my original notes for my partners' meeting, but a previous agenda item that you dealt with this morning brought up a new possibility, the potential for these homes built on these lots to become vacation rentals. And Mr. Johnson previously in this meeting mentioned that Hill City is currently reviewing the policies regarding the amount of vacation rentals. I'm wondering if Mr. Grover is anticipating in the covenants that these homes would be available to be used as Airbnbs, et cetera? Or if his covenants are restricting people to be homeowner occupied?
Mr. Grover is coming up to the lectern.
Grover again. And the covenants that, that I have put on these, uh, uh, properties is that there is no vacation rental homes of, can be used except for Lot J, which is the original homestead. And that is a nine-acre partial. And, uh, and, uh, basically my daughter wants to refurbish that house. It barred, it, uh, it, and turn it into vacation rental, but keep it to the original homestead. It barred, it uh, it, and turn it into vacation rental, but keep it to the original homestead that the Mills brothers did. But there, my covenants say there is no other, there, on all the other partials, there will be no vacation rental homes.
Thank you, David, I appreciate hearing that. I know the old Mills homestead quite well, visited many times in that house. I can see where your daughter would want to capture its charm. And um, but I'm, I'm grateful to hear that we might not be looking at hundreds and hundreds of people uphill from us who would love to use as much water as possible. I, I thank you, if I have more questions, I will certainly send them to Cody and to Ms. Molitor um, in writing, and we'll look forward to addressing those at a future meeting. I appreciate your time and your patience with my connectivity issue today.
No problem. Go ahead.
I'd make a motion for approval.
Second.
Motion and second uh, for approval um, of Item 12 CA 20 dash zero four, further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item thirteen.
Item thirteen is rezone RZ twenty dash zero six. It's to rezon sixty-nine point eight-four acres from General Agriculture District to Ranchet Residential District in accordance with Sections 205, which was prior to February twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one, two oh six, and five oh eight of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. Um, staff is recommending approval of this rezone because this request is in harmony with the future land use designation and comprehensive plan. Uh, this applicant has requested this rezone in order to allow the plating process to continue under preliminary plat PPL twenty dash thirty-six.
Thank you, are there any questions for staff on this item?
I guess we should make it part of the record. Yeah, I did have a question. These sites, as I pointed out to you before the meeting, normally with water treatment, especially with a pumping facility, and I'm not sure what the pumping facility is at this point in time, usually allow for uh, what would I call it, a, a maintenance type parking? So the vehicle doesn't end up on the road or additional vehicles?
That's the next item.
Oh, am I on row one?
Yeah, we are on fourteen.
Oh, all right, sure. Oh, we were, I, yeah, I'm on fourteen, sorry. Go ahead.
Uh, further questions for staff?
I apologize.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I'd make a motion for approval.
Second.
Motion for approval and second on Item thirteen, further discussion? Just to make sure, does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Hearing none, seeing none, um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, no. Motion carries. Brings us to Item fourteen.
Item fourteen is ma- minor planet, planned unit development amendment PU twenty-one dash zero four, to amend an existing planned unit development to reduce the setback from twenty-five feet to five feet to allow a water treatment structure and pump facility on the subject property. Uh, staff is recommending approval of this request. Um, the criteria that was reviewed for this, it says, does the required five-foot setback affect the South Dakota Department of Transportation? No, we did um, get a comment from them, as long as it doesn't impede or obstruct uh, the current Main Street, that they had no um, issue with it. Is there legal access to the property? Yes, are there eight-foot minor drainage and utility easements dedicated on the interior of all lot lines? No. Are building permits required for the existing structure? Yes, and is there special flood hazard area on the property? No. Uh, currently, this property has a older single-family residence that was constructed in eighteen eighty-six. Um, it was abandoned and is used for storage as part of this construction project. Uh, this was routed around to the interdepartmental review process and no objections were received. Uh, the original planning and development for this property was approved on May fifth, twenty-twenty by the Board of Commissioners. Uh, this water treatment facility, we did, staff did meet with the applicants last week regarding the placement of this water treatment facility. Uh, they had indicated that this is the best location um, in accordance with where the underlying water lines will be and for access to this. Uh, they are going to put an emergency provision in this that if there is an issue with the well, that they would be able to haul water to put into this facility. In order to do that, um, with those haul trucks, if it's closer to here, um, then the haul trucks wouldn't be going through these subdivisions and through this area um, to do so. So that's why they are requesting the increased setback is mainly for access um, for utility vehicles to this. And the applicant is in the audience if there's specific questions to it.
Okay, I slipped over too many Mr. Grovers, I apologize. Just to make for the record, I, I just wanted to note that these facilities like this usually have maintenance-type parking around them, and, and I have questions about removing the setback when it comes to that. I actually was wondering, and, and I'll reserve that for asking the applicant, what's the need for the additional space around it? Are, are we constrained by something that I can't see on the thing? So, anyway, but I, I definitely, if you look around at all these, I was involved in, in installing some of these. The maintenance is monthly and can get more serious than that. Well, pretty soon you've got maintenance vehicles on the road. We also have tourists coming and going from here now. And the maintenance vehicles keep getting bigger and bigger with the boxes on them where they can't see around them. They're going to have to pull out around them if they're on the road. So, that was my only point, and I wanted to make sure that I didn't hide that from the record, thank you.
If I may, there are three large cottonwood trees, and they would like to keep those there because of the um, just the view and things of that, so that is one of the um, constraints.
My question is regarding the safety, the, on this drawing, this one. It shows where it's at, um, and there's a road right in front of the water treatment facility called Existing Drive. My concern is the site triangle um, for a car turning left. So if there's a car coming, let's say, southwesterly on Main Street, is there, is the site triangle adequate?
Um, I have not been out there to look. I did um, put all of the departments, um, the highway department is um, generally opposed, but it says that about Highway sixteen, which are both D, uh, DOT jurisdiction, so they don't have any um, comments on it. And the DOT just says, as long as the structures reside solely on the applicant's property, that the DOT had no comments.
So, is the existing drive, is that road going to remain as part of the subdivision?
No, it is not.
It is not? Okay, so it's not, because isn't that the road that cuts between the highway up above and, and down to the main road? And that's not going to continue, is that correct?
No, my, my understanding is it's blocked off now.
Oh, it is.
Pretty much removed to drive by it every day and then take that access.
So this isn't like someone's going to find their, their, their way on there and it be an issue? It looks to me like there's a little bit of room to pull out in front of that uh, water treatment facility uh, so you can see down Main Street, but um, that, that's my concern is the site triangle for the oncoming traffic and turn, and turning left, outbound left out of that existing drive. Further questions for Brittany? Okay. You had questions for the applicant, is that correct?
Yes, I just wanted to see how they were going to use it or operate it and what, what it consisted of.
Yes, sir, if you could.
I'm somewhat familiar with these pumping things, so.
Doc Bell with PRH Investments. If you look on the south side or the lower part of our drawing there, you'll see the proposed drive into our townhomes. There'll be a, right across the street on the side where the water treatment facility is located, will be an access that will match up with that proposed drive. The reason why we want to move the water treatment facility within five feet is that we do have three wells on that site. We've tested them over the last three years, three different times. Uh, they've all performed, but we've had a wet period of time. So if we do have a situation where we have a drought, a contamination problem, we're going to have this building set up so we can actually haul water in and drop it in the facility as an underground storage tank. If we buy the water from the city of Rapid City, obviously it's treated. If we don't buy it from Rapid City, and that's because we do have seven hundred acres directly east of here, if we put a well in there, we may haul it untreated and still have to run it through the treatment facility. Two things happen uh, in this building. The first thing is, is we treat the water from two wells, right? That's our, that's where we're starting at, was with two wells. It then pumps up to our reservoir at the west end of the property. Do we have that large overlay on that? We just constructed a sixty thousand square foot, I guess we don't have it on that sheet. It's way to the left side, a sixty thousand gallon reservoir there. That will be treated water. At that point, then we'll draw, draw it down by gravity flow back down to this pump house, and this pump house then will serve as our pumping station for the entire thirty-acre development. So, we want to have the ability though, in case there's a problem, like some of the issues we're hearing about right now with other developments up in the hills, that we can feed water into our system externally. Does that answer your question?
Long time no see. Yeah, that must be where your trenching is coming down and then runs along, you can see it from sixteen?
Yeah, it's good, well, there's trenching on sixteen. That's the gravity flow line that comes in, and then it cuts across down to the Main Street.
Okay.
And then it will come in on the west end of the building, go through the building, hit the pumps. And the pumps then will pressurize the entire system throughout the development. That'll also be a connection point for fire departments to hook on to. We have other, obviously, fire hydrants.
Sure.
But there'll be a connection for a, you know, a fire truck.
Okay, what's your, in other words, if we looked at this site, let's just stay with the picture you showed here, how are you going to? In other words, you can't operate these things without pretty much regular maintenance, and, and they break down and things go wrong, even when they're new. And to make sure that you've got a safety factor there for the vehicles. And then if you're also having water trucks dump, what, what would be your plan there, Doc?
Well, first of all, we're redundant on all of our pumping system, okay? And our treatment system, we've actually got a treatment system that's capable of handling twenty-five thousand gallons a day. Now, that's set up so it goes in in stages. As we cer, as we, as we hit certain levels, then the second and third stages will kick in. And obviously, twenty-five thousand gallons a day is more than what we require for this development. But we expect, from what we're hearing, across the road, those people are down to a gallon a day uh, on their pumps. They've got serious nitrate infiltration problems going on right now. And we're just anticipating that there's going to be a need up there for treated water. For us, uh, down the road at the Sitting Bull Crystal Caverns property, seven hundred and thirty acres, there's three wells down there. They all produce, they're in the Madison, the Minnalu Sun, and the Deadwood formations. Up here, we're in the Precamrian Rock, we're just hitting the fissures. And we do have good flow, we've not had any problems. We've had, Alexander has tested our wells three times. We are in the final stages with the DE in our water quality tests. We pass all tests, we're just waiting for the synthetic organics test to come in. And that's the only one that's left.
Okay, and then my last question, Mr. Chairman, thanks for allowing me. If we weren't to approve the setbacks, what does it do to your plan? In other words, you haven't totally finalized your plan down there yet.
We move, what happens is, we keep the location generally the same, but we have to move twenty-five feet in. What we do then is we bring the trucks alongside that building between the building set, the new, the twenty-five-foot setback and the ditch where there's a drainage ditch in there, and we lose the cottonwood trees.
Okay, it's the trees.
We're going to plan, we're planning to make sure we have a dump site for additional water.
Okay, thank you.
I want you to put the building where it's best for your plan and your planning. My, again, my only concern is the, is the site coming out of that existing drive. But that existing drive will only be to service this building, is that correct?
That existing drive is gone. Uh, we've already, uh, with the DOT and our people have already put the guardrails across there. They can no longer cross to the property to the north. We've cut a bank of the dirt out already, and that is just there because that's what shows up on the aerial photo right now.
So, where will the cars parked then for the water treatment facility?
Well, there's only going to be really one car that's really going to be an issue. And there will definitely, there is room around that uh, for that. We don't, we didn't identify the parking, we can certainly do it, but uh, there's definitely room. The main thing for us is, if we pull in a semi tractor trailer with nine thousand gallons of water, we need it to pull alongside the building. So that's why I brought up the initial entrance point for the first townhouse that we built up there. We would match directly across the street, the approach then into the property on the north side where the pumping facility would be. And you would pull in and turn left and go right on the north side of the building where you would then tie into that building and drop the nine thousand gallons worth of wa, of water at that point. And that would introduce, depending on whether it's treated or untreated, then whether we'd run it through the filtration system.
Okay. Further questions for the applicant?
Was that additional story to above ground or underground, I didn't?
No, that will be underground stuff right there.
Okay.
Further questions? Hearing, thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I've got one more for Brittany, I guess.
Go ahead.
Brittany, I guess I still end up referred to it, they're going to count for parking. I'd, I'd like to see it as part of the, what we're doing here. Uh, so that there's at least, and, and there's going to be maintenance vehicles there. I know there's going to be the maintenance vehicles there besides trucks pulling through dumping water. They just do, those systems that are full of sensors and little things that, that kind of can botch everything up in a hurry for them. And there will be more than one, and there will be somebody else flying down to see the guy repairing it to what we can get to the bottom of. I mean, it gets, it can get hectic for the parking. And it, it would appear to me, I don't have any problem with more than one, but at least the, the, the service vehicle was out of the way. Thank you.
So just, Chair.
Go ahead.
These applicants have been working with our office um, very frequently. Um, there's a lot of moving parts with this development. Um, it is a planned unit development, um, so they are, you know, working with our office to get a lot of these infrastructure um, in place. Uh, it was conditioned, their planned unit development was approved and conditioned uh, with these water treatment facility requirements, onsite wastewater requirements. Um, they have submitted a drainage plan for the subdivision that our highway engineer has reviewed. Um, so they, they are working through a lot of these issues with our office and have been um, very forward in submitting plans and, and things. And we will send over, if there's still concerns about the site distance, we can definitely have our highway department take a look at it to see if they have any concerns from that aspect also.
Okay.
Yeah, well, just a direction, I, I'm not concerned about it being listed today to make me happy. What I'm concerned is that it become part of the, the thinking process for the continued development. And uh, Mr. Bell already noted that, that they were thinking about, they've got to come up with a way for some parking right there. And I, I just wanted to make sure it was involved, thank you.
Further questions? Hearing none, seeing none, staff recommends approval of minor planned unit development amendment PU twenty-one dash zero four with five conditions. Is there a motion?
I move for approval, second.
Motion and second, further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item fifteen, the county board report.
The Board of Commissioners concurred with the Planning Commission's recommendations from the February twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one Planning Commission meeting.
I have a question, Mr. Chair. Question about the variance on the Gordon Howey property. We delayed what we were going to do on that property so that the Board of Commissioners could take action on the variance. What happened with that?
They continued it to the April. It, no, it'll be continued again um, to the April, what is it, the twentieth? It's the second meeting in April.
Thank you.
So does that mean we?
It will, but it'll get continued again.
Get to the March twenty-second meeting and have it continue?
It'll have to be continued again. There, there's a potential that there won't be a full commission.
there, there's a potential that there won't be a full commission, um, during the Board of Adjustment hearing uh, on the sixth, and so the applicant had requested to have a full board to hear their item.
Okay. Anything else regarding the county board report? Items from the public? Noting none. Items from staff?
Uh, the building permit reports. I, I believe you have a copy of it. Um, we're starting to see the single-family home numbers are significantly higher than they have been in recent years. Um, last year at this time, we had issued about forty-three building permits, we're at ninety already, uh, this year, so we're about double. The requests, so we're seeing a lot of subdivision of property, a lot of building permits being issued.
Brittany, I see that many of them are in the Prairie Fire subdivision.
Yes.
Remind me where that is.
It is off of Anderson Road. It's south of Green Valley.
Okay.
Uh, that subdivision is actually platted through the city of Rapid City. Two of our bigger subdivisions that we're seeing a lot of, um, building permits for are Murphy Ranch Estates and Prairie Fire. Those were both platted in the city's three-mile plating jurisdiction, but they are those smaller, um, suburban residential style lots that have public water and, and sewer. So we're seeing quite a bit of development in those two.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else? Assistant Environmental Planner and Building Inspector update?
So we did have interviews for both of those. We have second interviews tomorrow for the Assistant Environmental Planner. Uh, the Building Inspector position, we have offered, um, the position to someone and um, given them till tomorrow to hear back. So we're hoping to hear back by then, so we'll update um, at the next meeting to let you know if there has been acceptance of positions.
Okay, anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Items from the membership? Is there a motion for adjournment?
Move to adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion and second. Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no.
Were in shock that I didn't say anything, weren't you?